Once again, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mayor Nash King, and I thank you all for attending today's council meeting. Let the record show that Mayor Pro Tim is absent. We will be having the invocation by Mr. Don Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Council Member Adams.
Thank you, Lord, for all you do for us. We owe you so much. Lord, we have some serious problems. We can only imagine the agony the hostages and families are going through in Israel. We have major problems with crime in our cities and looting and problems on the border. Even here in the council meeting, we have some friction. Maybe it's time for us to pray more and talk less and try to treat each other like Jesus treats us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion by Council Member Solomon. Council Member Board?
Second.
Second by Council Member Board. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Presentations. Madam Secretary.
PR 23-
Councilwoman Alvarez.
PR 23026, Colleen Starr Award.
Once again, good afternoon to everyone. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here to present this award. I won't be presenting it, but Council Member Alvarez will. You know, I'm very excited about this individual because all of you know him. And the purpose of receiving the Starr Award is for an individual that has gone beyond in volunteerism in our community, which Colleen is on the rise. So, this individual recognized tonight, please enjoy this with him and give him a lot of love. I will now turn it over to Council Member Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. And it didn't take very long when I started thinking of who I wanted to give this award to. As many of you already know, Lavalas does a lot in our community. I wanted to just say a few words for those of you that are not familiar or friends with Lavalas. He's a talented lyricist and songwriter, hailing from Texarkana, Texas. He made his, Colleen, his home in 2004. He has exceptional abilities that have allowed him to share the stage with some of the most prominent names in gospel music, including Myron Butler, Leondra Johnson, and many others. In addition to his music career, Lavalas has dedicated himself to serving this community. He has volunteered at nursing homes, hosted numerous charitable events, and supported youth outreach programs, amongst other things. Over five years, he has served as a mentor in the juvenile detention center, where he has impacted the lives of many young people. During a difficult time here in Colleen, he released a song and a video titled "Free My City." If you're unfamiliar with it, it's on YouTube, which became a movement that inspired others to unite and create a better future for our community. Lavalas is a true leader who uses his music as a platform for positive change. In 2021, he incorporated "Free My City" outreach to empower independent artists, uplift underserved youth, and revitalize crime-infested communities through hip-hop music and civic service. Lavalas dedication to promoting progress and positive change through music is truly inspiring, not only for myself, but for many of us here. His work has impacted many lives and earned him the respect and admiration of many, including myself. So, thank you, sir, is the least I can say for all that you do for us.
Some lyrics. I won't give lyrics tonight, but I just want to say thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Alvarez, for this nomination. I am truly humbled. I didn't see this coming. And even though all the things that I've done over the years in our community, I don't do it for moments like these. It's truly from the heart, just truly love to serve. But it's always encouraging whenever you do get that recognition, because it's just that motivation to keep going. And so, I just want to, again, thank you for this. And also, I want to recognize my family and friends that have come out today. My wife, beautiful wife over there, can you wave your hand? Yes. And my mother is over there as well. Can you wave your hand? And then I have my two boys here tonight, Micah and Levi. Y'all wave y'all hand. Don't do too much. And just all of my lovely friends, if you're here, can you just wave your hand so everybody can see you? Thank y'all so much. Before I take my seat, I just want to say, you know, I had a radical life change in 2006 with my faith. And it, you know, I had an encounter with Christ, and it really impacted my life so much that my music changed, my message changed. And since that moment, I have decided to dedicate my music, my craft, to serving my community. A lot of times, hip-hop and hip-hop artists get a bad rep for the type of content and music that they do. So, I tell people I'm a hip-hop artist, their reaction is, "Oh, my gosh." But I say, "No, listen to the message." And I have been able to use hip-hop as a way to reach out to a lot of young people that were in similar predicaments I was in growing up. If you had asked me back when I was 15, 14, what would I be doing? It definitely wouldn't be standing here receiving something like this. And so, I just want to encourage, you know, parents, young people out there that are into music, definitely push them, definitely encourage them, that you can be yourself, you can do music, you can be dope at it, and still have a great message and still serve your community on top of that. And so, I just want to thank everyone again for coming. Free My City is on the rise, Colleen Texas is on the rise, and I'm just happy to be a part of that. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
CP 23032, Sean Price. Personal disrespect by mayor and council member during and while on break.
Mr. Price, you have four minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So, yeah, just to preface this a little bit, this goes back to October 17th and October 19th, as you know. And it's kind of compounding. When I asked to speak, you denied my right to speak. And then, the following Thursday, you cordoned me off with a couple of police officers and the city manager, and the only one still in her seat was the secretary. You said that you apologized for the disrespect for ignoring me when I asked a question. However, it was felt very insincere, as that you just, you tried to mansplain to me what you did. Yeah? You disrespected a handshake from me, not once, but you've done that three times to me so far. I don't know what I've done to you. I don't know why the accusations that I'm harassing people here or the city staff, why you made that to the newspaper. But I don't threaten anybody, and I don't condone any violence or any threats to anybody here at the city council. You're my city council. That's, that's my representative right there. You're my mayor. So, I don't harass anybody. I don't harass the staff, anybody that services me or anything like that. So, I take offense of public accusations made to the, our newspaper. And that was reported to be you and Mr. Cagle made that report that I was harassing people. So, I'm here to address that right now. If you've got any questions of me about harassment or my actions, speak it now. Because I'm just saying, look, if you disrespect my handshake, you offer your hand to shake my hand to be respectful to me, and then you just look away and walk away at the same time, that's disrespectful to me. And then, when you cordoned me off with police and one other person, and nobody else in here but just me and y'all, and then you tell me I'm cutting you off, I'm like, we're not talking about city council. We're just having a conversation. We get to talk respectfully, right? I can disagree respectfully, but I don't need to be disrespected. And then, when I can't do that off the side, then this is the only avenue and the only approach that I'm, that's available to me. So, with that, that's what I had to say. I appreciate your time, and I'm here to answer any questions. If I've committed harassment to you, I apologize. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to lower my taxes. Stop spending money. That's what I'm here for. Is there any questions of me? Madam Mayor?
I guess there's no questions of you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
With that being said, I just wanted to address several things. The first thing is that the statement that was made that I cornered somebody off with police officers, and there was no one else in the room except me, police, Ms. Laura, and Mr. Cagle. Councilmember Board can attest to this, because he walked up to me, and that was after the town hall meeting, when there was a lot of people in the room. So, it was just not the five of us. It was, we had just completed the town hall meeting. I want to address harassment. If a staff member say that you or anyone else, it could be anybody in this room, speak to our city manager or one of the council members, because they have a concern about constantly being addressed and talked to in any kind of way, see, it's not what I perceive. It's the individual that you're talking to, that's how they perceive it. And I look out for the good of all residents, also council, and also city staff. So, if they have a complaint and tell Mr. Cagle or myself or other council members that they feel that way, I can't change how a person feel when you address them in any kind of manner. Madam Secretary. And let the record show Mayor Pro Tim is present.
CP 23033, Nigel Dunn. Thank you on behalf of the unsheltered community residing at Friends in Crisis.
Thank you. Welcome back, sir.
Hey, good evening. Good evening.
You have four minutes.
Before I speak about-
How you doing, ma'am?
Yes, Ms. Francie, she's going to present something to you guys. Before I speak about what I'm going to speak about, let me just say that respect is given, disrespect is earned. So, if you want respect, you got to give respect before you get it. All right. So, I just wanted to say, Madam, Madam Mayor, council members, you guys take a lot of heat for the things that, that happens in the city, but you don't get a lot, a lot of thank yous, you know? I came up here September 27th, I spoke about the Friends Crisis Shelter and how they were running out of money, and you guys assured us that you was going to find the money, and you did. And I'm just saying thank you on behalf of the residents in the unsheltered, unsheltered community. And Ms. Francie has something that she wanted to present to you guys, I think I had to give it there. Just a little small token of her appreciation. She's no longer in the shelter anymore. She, she has moved along now, but she still goes back there and she helps out the people in the shelter. And she does it a lot, you know, by walking around, by her own bus tokens and stuff like that. Taking them to the hospital, taking them to the doctor, taking them to them appointments. And she has been, she is really the true hero of this whole thing. You know, it's not me, you know, and people tell me, "Thank you," a lot, but she's the one who got me involved in everything, you know? So, just want to say thank you, is all we had to say.
Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Secretary.
CP 23034, Patsy Bracy. Removal of firearms from the city council chamber for safety of council members, the mayor, Mr. Cagle, and citizens.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Bracy.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor and City Council. After the posting of my petition on the agenda, I was labeled as a violent communist. There has been a picture posted of me on the website as a violent communist. And rather than accept to my present speech, I'm going to reverse it. Because I cannot determine-
Mrs. Bracy, the unique thing about-
Ma'am.
The unique thing about citizen petitions is that-
Yes, ma'am.
-once you put it in, you have to talk only on that subject.
I can alter a little bit.
Just as long as you're talking about-
After position, posting my petition, an attorney labeled me as a violent communist and social medium. I have learned a lot in this town, and that lately we've had anger that could provoke the misuse of firearms in the chamber. It was a great concern to me, but I altered my speech, so it didn't seem like I was trying to do something out of, after reading some of the suggestions that the mayor had about renovating and revising, I realized that that's the way we should go. And I did not come here to create any animosity toward anybody. And after that threat to me, it scared me. I'm scared to walk to my car tonight. But I know that you guys are going to do the right thing about gun control. You're going to take your best and make the best decision. Sometimes, it's time to hold them, sometimes it's time to fold them. Well, it's time for me to fold them.
Citizen comments. Melissa Brown. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Again, I'd like to stand here and say that I am in support of the Safer Streets for All Grant. It is something that we need to be talking about more, from what I understand, as an entire council, where the council members need to be discussing it and weighing in on it in order for us to have the best opportunities to be granted this amount in order to make our sidewalks and our streets safer all the way throughout the city, which is something we know we are in desperate need of. And anytime there's a lack of funding, whenever we can get grants to cover that difference, make sure that we're making our city a better place for everyone, truly, then that's what we need to do. I also still not seeing any information about the grant attached to the agenda or the agenda packet each week. So, I think if we're going to have more citizens come up and speak about it, they really need to know what it is they're talking about. I appreciate that the city has recently opened up the Arts and Activities Center as a warming center on three different nights. I don't think that this is a long-term feasible location for the city. When we look at the comprehensive plan, when we look at what the homeless plan was, it was to move our unhoused population out of the downtown area so we can draw more residents to downtown at night to do shopping, to go to events, and stuff like that. Longer that that facility is used, you can see it already, because when I needed to go down and hand out more blankets and hats and hand warmers and food, a lot of the unhoused neighbors are now living and staying around the Arts and Activities Center and in those blocks immediately around it, which is going into that downtown area. My concern is the number of those, those people within that population who are getting arrested for trespassing, even though they feel like they have no choice now. Either the shelter is there or the warming center is there. When it was off at other locations, even the Moss Rose Community Center, that's away from downtown, it's out of the way, it's around the corner, and there's a level of safety there for those people who are utilizing that service also. I have a very important question to wrap up with, and that is, who put this agenda item on here to remove citizens' petitions from the city council meetings? It wasn't addressed at the last workshop last week. It isn't anything I saw a motion of direction for. So, that means either the mayor, the city manager put it on there on their own, or a minimum of two council members emailed the mayor and city manager saying they wanted it on the agenda. Those are the only ways for it to be put there, and I would love to know who it is. That is, now wanting to go another step further in quieting the citizens and taking away our speech. There's accusations being thrown around by council members, by city managers. The mayor is correct, nobody can help the way somebody perceives something. Doesn't mean you go to the newspaper with it when someone tells you that that's their perception. For example, I perceive it that I was threatened, and so was everyone else. When the mayor put in the paper, she would give everyone a first warning at every meeting, so there was no confusion when the police were asked to escort a personnel. Or when the mayor said that she was going to add a whole lot of extra police officer to keep an eye on the citizens, which just does nothing but tell the public and potential investors, our mayor doesn't even trust our citizens and doesn't even feel she's safe. Why would they come here? I want to know who's responsible for this, so we know who to not vote for.
Your time is up. And I just want to make some corrections on that. The police officers are here for the safety of not just the council, but also the residents and also the staff. There have been several council members have concerns about, several concerns about the behavior, especially our last council meeting. Something that started within this chamber led to an altercation outside this chamber. That's your first warning. Do not interrupt this meeting. That's your first warning. Second, the conversation about the mayor and the people making threats. Why do I need to make a threat to anyone? I was voted in by the people to be the mayor of this city. I have a council that does an extraordinary job. The mayor just presides over the meeting. The council makes the decision, four to three, or five, or however they want to vote, that goes into a play. So, I'm getting more power than what I deserve, because I don't have that authority. That is your second warning. That's your second warning, because you are interrupting the meeting. Ms. Anka. Good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. From my experience, people filed citizen petitions as a last resort when contacting council members, city manager, and other city staff does not work. I think it would be better to meet in person and discuss. However, you, from my experience, you refuse to. If you do find the time to meet, I agree, you probably have less citizens' petitions. Also, the main purpose of a council, council meetings is to discuss problems. So, by definition, we're going to have disagreements, right? By definition, we're not here to praise, just talk about praise. I mean, we're here to talk about problems and discuss issues. If we're just here to praise, nobody will show up if we're just here to praise you. I mean, that would just defeat the purpose. And what you see as an attack of you and the city managers, actually the result of issues being ignored for years. I can show you emails I sent you years ago, and I asked you for advice. I got no response, completely ignored, completely ignored. And that's how it got to this point. And families were hurt. People I talked to moved out of Colleen for that reason. I had been told by several people, "I don't bother going to city council, because all they're going to do is ignore me." The city website advertises citizen engagement. That sounds wonderful. But if you're proposing to remove citizens' petitions, it doesn't make sense. It does, okay, I still have time. And I appreciate, appreciate you letting me speak. Citizen engagement is for you to hear praise. I agree totally. It is, you should hear praise, and you deserve praise. But that's not the main purpose. The main purpose is to discuss problems like crime, or, I don't know, water lines or roads. That's why people come to city council. And if they, if you take criticism as an attack, I don't see how you can do the job if, you will be criticized. No matter who you are, you will be criticized. And as far as safety in council chambers and removal of firearms and so on, I'd like to remind you, the only time police recognized a violent threat was from one of you. When one of you went into the audience, all the way to the end of that room, that's when police, on their own, without being called, intervened. And they have training, they know how to recognize a threat. That was the only time when the police, on their own, determined, yes, this is a threat, we have to step in. And they did. And last meeting, yes, I agree, it was very rude, uncalled for, for that person to yell or raise his voice at the photographer and stop him from taking a picture. That was rude. That was uncalled for, unnecessary, but it was not violent. The police didn't approach to stop the discussion. That was not violent. It was rude. I didn't like it. And I'm glad you apologized to the photographer. I don't think it was necessary. But again, it was not violent. The police did not approach last week when that happened. They only approached when- They only approached when one of you actually went in the audience and threatened to attack somebody. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Ms. Anka, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You said that you send me emails, and anybody that know me, I do reply back to emails. But I'm curious, who is your council representative on this council?
I am in DTJ, so I don't know who it is. I guess it's all, everyone at large. What does that mean? Does that mean I, so, okay, can you please explain what that means?
So I'm just trying to, you say you sent me an email.
Well, all of you, not just you, sorry. Sorry for being.
And I want to do one more clarity.
Yes.
It was not a council person up here that had gone out into the audience to attack anybody?
Well, one of you, well, not you in particular, but a council member, yes.
That person's been long gone. So when you make a statement, and that's just why I'm getting clarity, I want everybody to know.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. None of you here today, yes.
To my left nor my right have ever gone out in the audience in an aggressive manner toward a resident. The individual she's talking about, I think they've been gone six, seven, eight months, long gone. But councilmember board have a question for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have a question. I was going to clarify what you just stated, that it is a fact that not one council member up here stepped out to the front.
Thank you for clarifying. I apologize. I apologize for the, thank you for clarifying. Yes, the point is that a council member threatened the audience, not the other way around. And that's when, you're talking about being safe here, you know, it goes both ways. Anyway, yes, thanks for clarifying. Thank you.
Mrs., Mr. Jonathan O'Kray, good afternoon, sir, you have four minutes.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, I stand before you appalled that this subject is again on your agenda. During my time of service to our city, state law as it regard the carry of firearms by citizens of this state on public property allowed for the option to carry, open carry lawfully. Subsequent to the change of this law, the city took it upon itself to ban the lawful carry of firearms in either concealed carry or open carry configuration. All right. I took it upon myself to bring that item back up for discussion, and subsequently, the Colleen City Council amended its policy to be amenable to state law. Subsequent to that, a member of the council brought this very subject back to the council for workshop, where the wisdom of the council at that time was to amend the city policies to come in line with state law. And what is your problem? You cannot come in line with straight law. We have something down at the city. The city is down in the Third Court of Appeals right now, because we tried to change state law at the municipal level. How crazy could that be? And coming from a historian and a political science major? That's nuts. Listen closely, listen closely. Are you familiar with the following people or organizations? Pol Pot, Mao Zedong, Fidel Castro, Kim Jong-un, Adolf Hitler, the KKK, the first American terrorist organization formed by the Democratic Party, Benito Mussolini, and the Ayatollah R. Al-Akramani. All of these people, oh, except for the little men running around with all of the medals on with the funny hat, those people too. They all had one thing in common. They were able to kill millions of people because of one thing. The general populace was stripped of their right to keep and bear arms. Again, imagine, now, me being black all my life, imagine after 1865, had I, if I was a former slave, I had the privilege to carry a gun. I don't think the KKK would have stood a chance. So how much further, me as a black man, being black all my life, with this thing strapped on my back, would went, well, we would have been further down the road had we had it. But because of the Supreme Court and Justice Tenny? In a case where a army major took his slave out into the territories, he said it was, not only did he say that he didn't have a right, but he said, you know what? Black people cannot carry guns. What is wrong with y'all? And I'm looking, the majority of you are people of color, and yet we still have this stuff coming up here. But I'll tell you what, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Segarra, and whoever else it was, I recalled you. Guess what? I'm doing it again. I'm doing it again. I'm doing it again. And you know what? I'm going to add Mr. Boyd, Mr. Adams, Ms. Cobb, Mrs. Gonzalez, and I promise you, Mr. Alvarez, I will get more than 19 signatures this time. You know what? I'm going to get that. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Cochran. Good afternoon.
Before I start, can you answer the question the young lady had about who's responsible for the petition being on tonight's agenda?
It's going to be on the presentation, you would know. You still have your four minutes to get started, sir.
Tonight, I'm speaking on RS 23-193, Removal Citizen Petition Section from the City Council Agendas. Good citizens of Colleen, history will be made tonight. Changes to the city charter will be approved. I know it will be approved, because you're cowards. The city attorney is removing the citizens' petitions from council agendas, council meetings, and governing standards that are located within the Colleen documents. Constituents will lose their ability to speak on any given topic of their choosing and not be able to speak or highlight of any issue that is personally important to them. In the past, citizens' petitions were used to voice concern in areas that the council may not be aware of. For example, concerns over the homeless population. For example, brown water coming out of homes that are constantly broken or have broken pipes that the city manages. For example, requests for people to the city council to not to purchase dilapidated buildings or properties which they went and moved forward with. For example, the constant disinformation of building some imaginary grocery store in the northern district. My personal favorite, the last one, is personal request for the city council to review how many vehicle washing stations are needed within a seven-mile radius of the city limits. For the record, 47 is how many we have, and they're still being built. While a person is speaking, the mayor and the city manager, for some reason, cannot politely listen to that person for four minutes. It surprises me. Instead, the city council actively blocks meaningful efforts to resolve many of these constituent problems and challenges by interrupting them and a lack of showing sympathy for that residence's concerns. I personally witnessed the council use allocated time in citizens' petitions portion while that person's speaking to interrupt them or intimidate that speaker, so they go off course and don't know really what they're talking about, because you don't listen. To me, the city attorney has taken precious time away from the city council, which it now uses to look at their phones and fend off public accountability. To speed up their agenda process, the mayor and the city manager have previously said that the elimination of four minutes by this council should help move along the agenda. Tonight, these historic public chambers will approve a violation of the U.S. Constitution. The so-called leaders of Colleen will eliminate free speech without a constituent's vote, approval, or any kind of recognition. The founding fathers of the U.S. Constitution will be disgusted by the council's act to remove citizens' petitions and the free speech that goes along with it. My question to you is, how long are the residents going to align with this low-level government issues when the council takes away their time of free speech? Let's look at the council. It's comprised of former military service members who tonight will take part in the legal removal of free speech, as well as the citizens' petitions. I must remind these takers of freedom that in five months, voters will go to the polls and have the opportunity to remove these cowards and these shameful men from office. Democracy dies when Colleen's leadership becomes too powerful, especially when they fail to incorporate a checks and balances approach in the city management. I have witnessed the mayor use her gavel to eliminate free speech and interrupt someone when they're speaking. Thanks for not doing it to me. She personally disagrees with them and tries to discourage them from sharing their personal views. I know that for certain, tonight, all of us will be witness to the downfall of democracy and the guaranteed removal of citizens' petitions and their voices. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Mayor, and our constituents. Every day, I get a call, or I get a comment, or someone says, "Mrs. Cobb, did you know?" And I say, "Do I know what?" Silence always works. Work will win when winning won, just because I don't say a word. I'm not a coward. Just because you don't see me, or I'm not talking to you, does not mean that I'm not doing the work that needs to be done. I work with fine individuals up here. To say that we are not listening, don't you get it? The more I listen, the more that I can do. We don't have time to run and comment on everything, but I have time to work. And that's what I do, I work. Is that the buzzer for me? I'm always too long.
Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go on record as saying that we are not discussing removing firearms, as that last speaker kind of mentioned. That's something that is the benefit of putting a citizens' petition, and so, you know, he put that on there. By no means, I don't think anybody here was ever discussing that. And I think a lot of times, that's a confusion that happens out there with people, is that, you know, things are put on there. I know last week, we had that big discussion, and it wasn't anything that the city council was discussing, but yet, a lot of people felt the need to speak on it. And so, I just want to go on record as clearing that, making it clear that, and no time has there have been a discussion of removing firearms from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Councilmember Segarra, but I just want to get some clarification on something. There is a difference between the charter citizen petition and the council meeting citizen petition. There's a big difference between the two, and later on, you will understand that difference. So you're not taking away from the Constitution, or taking away somebody's freedom of speech, because the citizen petition that's on the agenda, it was put on by the council in 1985. It wasn't, it's not the state law. So I just want, the ones that's at home, that are listening and in the audience, there is a difference, and it will be discussed later. With that being said, Mrs. Shirley.
Good evening, everyone. DS 23-111, that's number 17 on the agenda, discuss the possible sale and value of city-owned property, et cetera. I am curious about the possible sale of downtown property. The only one I know of is the Hacks Western Ware Building. Why would the city purchase this property and then advertise it for sale at a loss to the city? To my knowledge, there have been no improvements to this property, and it is in a rundown condition, so I'm curious as to that. The other item I would like to talk about is number 10 on the agenda, RS 23-193, Removing the Citizens' Petition. Why would you do that? You're trying to control what is said and brought before the public? That's the case ever since I have been coming before this council to speak. I have been gavelled out numerous times. I've been given 20 questions when I did a citizens' petition, and even once, my petition title was intentionally not put on the agenda. This council has not been listening to the residents and what the residents want. You are not there for your own agenda and interest. You are supposed to be an extension of the citizens of Colleen. A removal of the petition would thereby open up citizens' comments to include off-the-agenda as well. And whomever is advocating with petition removal and not opening up comments to include off-the-agenda items is complacent. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Teal. Good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, actually, it's good evening. Hi, how is everybody this evening? It's pretty good. We actually witnessed the citizens' petition work. Patsy Bracy brought something up, people came out to speak about it. That's the great thing about citizens' petition, even though I've recorded Ms. Bracy telling people that freedom of speech ends at the city limits of Colleen, Texas. It was on Channel 6 News that I caught this with her threats. I don't believe that freedom of speech ends at the city limits of Colleen, Texas. I think it starts there. I think it starts with each and every one of us. When I was younger, I demanded respect, until somebody told me. There's only four types of people that demand respect, and our chief will tell you. Gang members demand respect. If you don't give respect, what do they do? They silence you, in many different ways. Abusive parents demand respect, because if a child speaks out, what do they do? That child didn't respect me, they silenced them. There are several more that I can go into, but I don't have time. Don't be like them, don't be the abusers. But citizens' petitions are a legal way for citizens to put something on the agenda that allows the council and citizens to legally engage into a topic. This gives city council and other citizens time to prepare to discuss the topic and to place the topic legally on an agenda, and within the laws and guidelines of the Texas Open Meetings Act. In other words, they have to follow the rules by making the title clear, so that everybody can understand it. I mean, I've seen many board meetings where I have no clue what is on the agenda, and I have to actually send a message and ask, what are we talking about? Because it makes no sense. It also gives the citizens a chance to come in and discuss, because maybe several other citizens might also feel the same way. Maybe there were several citizens out here that would have liked to say they don't want guns here, in, you know, city chambers. That brings me to that one. Oh, my goodness, seriously? I hate to tell you, there is not one person in here going to harm another person. Trust me. If they were going to harm anybody, I'm a witch. Matter of fact, I had somebody call me that on a stand, in a courtroom, that I was a witch. And the worst part is, I've actually had people throw holy water on me, deny me my religious rights, all kinds of things. I've been told by pastors, matter of fact, pastors that come in here and speak, that I should be burned at the stake. But you know what? If I was worth it, they would have already taken a shot at me. There is nobody in here better than anybody else. We all get criticized. We all get criticized. Trust me, I get criticized all the time. I have Ms. Bracy spreading rumors and lies about me all the time.
Ms. Teal.
But it just happens. Grow up.
Thank you for those nice words. Mr. Leo Gukeisen. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and distinguished guests. I was originally going to speak on two topics for this evening. The one, first one, was remove the firearms from the city council chambers. But I'm not going to speak my whole speech on that. What I'm just going to say on that is...
Did you want to add one, another item on here?
No, I have two items on there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. The item that was on the agenda was to speak about removing firearms from the council chambers. The individual who put it on there decided not to talk about it, and was allowed to explain about other things that have happened to her, and that they did happen to her, that's, I apologize, that's just people being ignorant. But the thing is, is when another person steps up to talk about it, they get frowned upon and said, "Well, told that that's not on the topic, so on the agenda, so we should not be talking about it." But it is. It was there. And this body let the individual go ahead and speak totally on something else, and then when someone does speak on topic, they get penalized. My next topic is the removal of citizen's petition. I've been attending the city council meetings for over 10 years now, and I've seen some weird things, believe me or not, but this one here just totally blew my mind. And I was really more disappointed with the fact that our city attorney, who is a lawyer, as you know, agreed with the blatant violation of personal constitutional rights. The right of, for a citizen to petition the government for redress and grievances is part of the foundation of this great nation. Our founding fathers sought this to be true, and that is the reason why it is part of the First Amendment, not the Second, not the Third, or the Fourth. The right to petition the government for redress and grievance is among the oldest in our legal heritage, dating back over 800 years to the Magna Carta, and receiving explicit protection in the English Bill of Rights of 1689. A few years back, I took an oath, like some of you did who served in the military, that you would protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And other members of this council took a similar oath when they were sworn in. Neither of those oaths say that we can pick and choose which amendments we choose to I have to fully disagree with the judgment of our city attorney and her opine that was part of the agenda packet, and some members of the body, that the citizen's comments and citizen petition afford the person the same rights. That is incorrect. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, citizen's comments restrict what a citizen can speak of or about. It is on, that item has to be on the agenda, where a citizen petition allows the citizen to address matters that are important to them, or maybe to others as well. As an elected official or an appointed official, criticism, or in recent times, as this body has referred to it, attacks, is an implied task that comes along with your job. Not everyone is going to stand and praise this body, except for a few people.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. May I get another minute?
Mr. Counsel. Well, let me just do a raise your hand. I'll say yes, raise your hand. One, two, three, okay. You have an extra minute.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Not everyone's going to stand up and praise this body. If you can accept the praise, then you should be able to accept the criticism that comes along with it. It will be, in my opinion, a sad day for Colleen if this motion of direction is carried forward with any type of resolution that bans or denies the citizen petition. As President Abraham Lincoln once said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton.
I'm coming back again. Silence is important. Sometimes, you tell me who you are by what you say. Remember what you say, because you've told me who you are. That's something very important. Dr. King tells us, in his quotes, that the minute that we become silent about things that matter, that we're wrong. We're not saying, with the things that I'm hearing tonight, everyone in this room has the right to believe what they believe, when you have facts to come with it. But when we do character assassinations, constantly eating at each other, it does not help. You know why I'm silent? Because I take your words. I listen to what you say. I research what you say. Go out and look at what you're saying. And if there's an answer out there, then we hold people accountable. I don't have to sit here and shake my hand and clap my hands.
Mayor Proton.
I am just telling you, Mayor...
Your time is up.
To be just, to be honest, to be fair.
Michael Fernino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, everyone, and to ACLU, which is watching this meeting with good intent. First, you and the council ignore and defy state law, now you're emboldened to do the same for the supreme law of the land? Mayor, you've gone too far. The agenda tonight is pure and simple fascism. That's the definition, and facts don't care about your feelings. Oh, my own council representative stated on the record that you all act as a team, so I guess that ideology applies to all of you. The Constitution limits the government, not us. You obviously don't know or care. The First Amendment supersedes anything you, the county, or the state says. Taking the right of the people to petition the government redress grievances on the agenda for discussion? Shame on you. You all swore oaths to the Constitution and clearly don't even know what's in it. Let's be honest, you want to deny a right because you can't withstand criticism. The mayor doesn't hold herself or anyone else in the city accountable, or answerable, or anybody but herself. You're failing as a leader, and you don't want the word to get out or get on the record. Instead of petition, contact you by email or phone, all we get is voicemails that aren't even set up or ever answered. The best response via email is, "Thanks for the email." I say "response" because you never get an answer. Try to ask the mayor to question directly after a meeting adjournment, and what does she do? Can't gavel me out, can't be bothered to answer, so she raises her arms like Moses and has me flanked by three police officers. That's on video, by the way. Mayor, your power ends at adjournment. You'd do well to remember that. Now she proposes to, ironically in support of a citizen's petition, possibly disarm us in the name of safety and security. Whose safety and security are we talking about here? Certainly not the citizens. To date, the only attacks that have occurred have been from public officials on citizens. Nothing spoils a good story like a witness. I witnessed last week's event. Where was your concern for public safety the night I was attacked by Mr. Wilkerson? Did you order him taken into custody? Have him removed from the building? Nope. You flailed around indecisively with no leadership ability. Instead, you and your sycophants focus on me confirming by your hysterics announcing that I had a weapon. A weapon was never involved. Lead by example, in response to disarming us for safety concerns and all else that's going on here. You consistently claim that you haven't used the police as your personal bodyguards. Well, now it's official. You want and propose to swarm the city hall with cops, officially be escorted to your cars, and sequester city staff away from us? Oh, by the way, public records requests can't seem to find any instance of any of you or staff being harassed or attacked. Wouldn't those police officers be better used on the streets actually fighting crime instead of your fantasy narrative? You're gaslighting and stoking fear to distract from your own failings. Increased police presence for nonexistent threats to your safety is actually another form of intimidation. It's on file with Bell County, the paper can check, I know they won't, that a judge said you have a pattern of harassment and intimidation. The judge pulled the reverse Uno card on you after you tried to sue citizens claiming that they were slandering you. Have you considered that your stoking fear might motivate some truly unhinged person to try to come in here and try to do something? No, of course you haven't. Strange citizen's petitions seem to interfere with the council's agenda. Isn't it our agenda? Are specific citizen concerns too bothersome for you? You've forgotten that you're representatives. I wonder if you'll gavel anyone out after me who only sings your praises about you and the council, and how much they love you, but doesn't actually address any of the agenda items? You know, how much they love you. They're either going to have to speak on specifics to the agenda items and declare a position, otherwise you're proving my points.
I will speak on that. Mayor Proton.
I know y'all are tired of me tonight, but I want to tell you something. Respect is earned. I can get more cooperation with sugar than I can with vinegar.
Thank you. I just, I... I just want to address some of the things that were spoken. The first thing is police escort. Any resident, staff, or anyone here, if you feel that you don't want to go outside by yourself in the dark, and we have police officers here, they are more than willing to escort you. It's just not a council thing. Some staff members do get escorted out by other staff, male staff members, the female, that's a given. And then to say, "I went to court," and I know I'm wrong on this one, and say, "I lost a case," that's not true. That's, one more time, Ms. Brown, or whoever, Ms. Teal, one more time, you will be put out. That's my last warning in disrupting the meeting when someone else is talking. The judge made it clear, no one lost, won that case, but there was a sanction put on me. And if you go down to Bell County and request those records, you pay for it, you will receive it.
Final order.
Okay, I know I was wrong on them, so thank you for catching me on them, but I didn't lose it. Second of all, slander. There's one thing between your freedom of speech, but this council also has the freedom of speech. Whether someone come up here and praise us, or someone come up here and slander our name, it's still freedom of speech. So you don't have to like what someone's saying, it's freedom of speech. But it crosses the line and violates a person's freedom of speech when you do slander, false accusations, and try to assassinate their character when you have four minutes. For the last six months, go look at the videos, is either councilmember Sagara, Mayor Nash King, or Mr. Kegel? And every now and then, Alvarez. So these are just political stunts that I told y'all months ago, with, they use it under freedom of speech to attack people for no reason. That's your first warning. With that being said, Don Baker. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
It's going to take me four minutes to get up to this.
Don't take your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some of my thunder's already been, been taken. I was here to speak on the, on the gun issue.
Yes, sir.
There's never been an incident of gun violence here, and I don't think anybody's right to carry, should be diminished because somebody is hysterical or paranoid about it. And that's all I'm going to say on that. But I think it also is a violation of the preemption laws of Texas.
Yes, sir.
And I know some attorneys will sort of push that. Secondly, I do not want to see anything happen to the citizen petitions. That is our method of communicating to you. And I'm not going to impinge anybody's motive, but I think anybody who wants to cut off communication between the citizens and the electorate and you people is doing the citizens a great disservice.
Thank you.
And that's all I'm going to have to say on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Madam Secretary, consent agenda. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each.
RS 23-188, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the FY 2024 Texas Officer of the Governor Homeland Security Grant Program Application Award. RS 23-189, consider memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with CPNY, doing business as STV Infrastructure for the Design of the Stone Tree Drive Drainage Improvements and Retaining Walls, in the amount of $127,310. RS 23-190, consider memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Walker Partners for the Design of the WS Young Drive and I-14 Intersection Drainage Improvement Project, in the amount of $68,700. RS 23-191, consider memorandum resolution approving change order number three to the Taxiway B Rehabilitation Contract with TTG Utilities Incorporated, in the amount of RS 23-192, consider memorandum resolution approving amendment number one for the Taxiway B Rehabilitation Professional Services Agreement with Garver LLC, in the amount of $269,200.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Council, oh, it's up here. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
RS 23-193, consider memorandum resolution to remove the citizen petition section from city council agendas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I requested for this item to be put on the agenda, and if the council will bear with me, I will explain to you why. I do understand, as a city official, I do expect criticism. That's been going on in my life ever since I came on the council since 2017, by the same people, majority that spoke here tonight, so I'm accustomed to that. So it's not about criticism. It's about taking advantage of a tool that has been put in place. And as y'all witnessed tonight, and go back and look at the video, I was the center of attention. That was a given. And as I stated months ago, the election is coming up. Months ago, I said, "As we get closer to May 2024 election, the attacks are going to be so severe, false rumors on truths are going to come at such a pace, not only for me, but the other individuals that are running." So I prepared a speech so I could stay, it's going to be quick, on topic, to tell you why this is my recommendation. As mayor, I am responsible for the structure of these meetings, and the citizen petition process needs to be changed to how it was intended to work. As you know, the citizen petition currently for residents to speak at council meetings was put in place by the council in 1995, and it has have had eight amendments. And this particular city petition that's on our agenda, not the charter, but on our agenda, it is not required by state law to have it. The council intent for the citizen petition was for citizens to bring... The council intent for the citizen petition was for citizens to bring items that were not on the agenda to discuss it before the council. However, the process has turned into a hostile exchange of words, including name-calling, untrue allegations, and falsely accusing an individual of things that do not benefit our city's future growth, and it also damages the city image. I request that the council amend the city petition from the, uh, the agenda and governor's standards and expectation, and create a more efficient process for residents to voice their concerns on topics outside the agenda. It does not take away from an individual's freedom of speech because citizen comments and public hearings, which is required by state law to be on the agenda for residents to share their comments. Instead of the citizen petition that we currently have on the agenda, I recommend that residents contact the council and staff directly, which will only help give the council and staff more clarity on their concerns. This will also give an individual more time to discuss in-depth issues through telephone conversations, face-to-face meetings, or emails with any council representative or staff member, because they will not be limited to four minutes. This process will respect everyone's freedom of speech because the district council representative can put the residents' items on the agenda if they deem necessary. This council needs to move the city forward for the good of all citizens, stakeholders, and business owners in our city. This process will bring a positive change for all individuals attending and viewing council meetings online. This process will also benefit the residents by allowing them to discuss any topic in detail with city staff and council, and ideally, find resolutions to share with the public. It will also improve communication because the current citizen petition process is just not working. So I want to reiterate to the public and to the council, the process that I'm recommending, that I explained for residents to voice their concerns about items outside the agenda, it is efficient because the resident voted us in position to be the voice for them and to also assist them with resolving conflict and problems that they have concerns with. It will keep an individual's freedom of speech because citizen comments and public hearing will remain on the agenda, and any one of the council representatives of the district can add a, or the three-at-large representative, can add that resident concern or complaint to the agenda. And I also want to talk about the difference. What we have right now, what happened tonight, me being, what they say is just a constructed criticism, just untruths just constantly being said because an item that was put on the agenda as a citizen petition, that's one thing. But the charter, let me make that clear. The charter, the, the charter, that the citizen charter, which allows initiatives and referendum, rendums, that allows an individual to submit or remove legislative proposals, that we cannot touch. That's the citizen petition that was used when they went out and got the marijuana ordinance passed, that the people, that's just not five, six, or seven. The majority of the people wanted that. And the, the, the citizen petition we currently have at every council meeting, if warrant for it, is something that we put in place. And I'm just saying, we cannot continue the function as a city, and I'm open to recommendations, but the process must change. Councilmember Board.
Sir, you're out of order, and that's your first warning. Please take a seat. Uh, I think people have already said that they Sir, that is your second warning.
Please take a seat.
More votes, gentlemen, that's what you're saying.
Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, appreciate it. I do want to note, we have one of our former stellar council members in the audience today, and I'm sure he does not miss this. Um, trying to lighten up these remarks, you know, a lot of what was heard today is uncomfortable as an elected official, but that's what we signed up for, right? That's what I signed up for. Uh, I'm just gonna be frank and to the point like I typically am, and say, I was honestly surprised, uh, to see this on our agenda. And just reading the caption for the first time rubbed me and a lot of citizens the wrong way. This is my personal statement. Uh, so let me preface my brief comments by saying this first. There are a lot of people watching this meeting and watching to see how the city council's gonna consider this item. Uh, and I just want to be clear where I stand on it before we get started. Uh, I don't feel it's appropriate to remove the citizen's petition from future agendas for the simple reason it will eliminate the opportunity for citizens to inform the council on relevant community-related matters, community-related matters. As a citizen representative, it's important to me that citizens can exercise the citizen petition, which is also a guaranteed method to address the city council on an issue not present on a meeting agenda. I do recognize the perceived desire to mitigate the extreme scrutiny or, and unfounded accusations, which do exist. However, if the concern is to increase meeting efficiency, let's look at alternatives to make the citizen's petition a more productive portion of the meeting. For example, establishing a limit on the number of petitions per agenda, or even considering a limit on the number of petitions per individual within a defined timeframe. Discussion along these lines, I feel, is warranted, but not at the absolute removal of the citizen's petition. I did just hear the mayor mentioned, or, uh, mention a amendment to it, which I think is probably gonna be more appropriate than the removal. And the last thing I'll say is, uh, that was just one hour of this meeting, and, um, I don't want folks to look at our city council and, and it be perceived as a sideshow. That's not what it is. We're here to do business. We're also here to make sure that the citizens are heard, and we understand where they're coming from. Those are my, those are my words. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counsel, um, and city attorney, you may have to help me with this. I, uh, did not see, uh, Mr. Sean Price's paperwork, 'cause he had the citizen, uh, petition, and he also got citizen public hearing, and it's just, I didn't see that this one is another one. Uh, 'cause on here it had the public hearing, but here it was things that, I just see public hearing on here. I did not see, yeah, right here. So he had two, and I'm hoping in the future we can put them all on one. Can I go back to allow him the opportunity to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Price, I'm gonna yield the floor counsel to him. I apologize. The next time, uh, we just gonna have to do a better process. Thank you.
Agree, right?
All right, so you have four minutes.
And, and you asked if there was anybody else, but I, I was just trying to be correct and wait my turn, you know, so.
Yeah, you thought, you, you, yes, sir.
Yes, you did ask if there was anybody else, but I was just waiting to hear my name, so I didn't, I didn't want to interject.
You wanted to speak during the resolutions, but you had to speak during the citizen comments. That's okay, but we corrected it.
Okay, so, um, with, with this, I'm looking at House Bill twenty-eight forty, and what it says about the council's required to allow the public to speak on items on the agenda, either at the beginning, or at the opening meeting, uh, or during the meeting, uh, when an item is being discussed by the council. So, that according, uh, what I understand with that is, that's part of the Open Meetings Act, right? That House bill. And it speaks further into it, and it also goes into Section nineteen eighty-three, Title forty-two, USFC. So that is that every person who, under color of law in any state, this is not federal law, right? About our, our, our right to speak, right? I understand that we gotta come correct when we use our First Amendment right to speak, okay? So, when I say, "This is my First Amendment right to speak," I know that that comes with a certain amount of guidance. Okay? If we need to get it, bring it down into, uh, detail, that's what I was speaking to about etiquette and professionalism, right? That we need to get there, we need to have some kind of way or explanation or policy note for the citizenry, how we come forward with something that we want to bring to the table. And if you want to lower the temperature out here, allow us to just speak our mind on the topic, or on any topic. Give us our four minutes, and let us speak. I understand that we should come correct and respectful, 'cause like I said, it's a reciprocal thing with respect, right? So with that, I would say, i- it's very, very, very dangerous what's going on here when we want to pull away citizens' petitions, right? It's our right to speak. This is the most sacred thing that we have between our city government and our citizenry, and doing that causes distrust. So I implore you, think about this very carefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for your patience, but I
Thank you for allowing me to come back in.
Oh, no problem, anytime. Let me repeat myself. It's to change the, amend the way we do the citizen petition. Amend the way we do the citizen petition. With that being said, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, when I saw this on the agenda, I got numerous phone calls, text messages.
We all do.
And, and emails. Um, the city council does have the right to set its procedures, and this is one of them. The Texas Open Meeting Act allows us to determine what, um, how we do the process. But when you look at other cities, almost every city in the state of Texas allows citizen comments, uh, or a citizen petition. They allow a way for citizens to present items that are not on agenda, as well as speak on items. So if we start to do this, I think careful going, treading down a road, I don't know what the road, I haven't seen the resolution, to be able to vote on it. Uh, and I think this is something we could have discussed at the open, at the workshop first, before, then we, then we make a decision here. Um, and, you know, I'm not an expert on that. Uh, we hear about, we, on our website, we talk about citizen engagement, um, inclusivity, 'cause if you look in the room right now, unless we were talking about marijuana or something like this, place would be packed. I'm surprised we're not packed now, and so we don't get a lot of people to come out. Uh, each city council member doesn't have an office or a staff to engage in, with citizens on a daily basis. Um, I, I'm retired, I have time, so I can reach out and talk to people, but not all of, I don't know if the capability is every other city council member. Um, and so the citizen petition allows people to come before us to present items that we don't know, we don't, that they want to do yet. Um, I'll be honest, I'm not fast to call you back on a, on my phone, but if you email me, I'll get back to you. It can be seventy-two hours. Sometimes it might take a few more days if I'm, if I'm on personal travel. Uh, we all talk about transparency. Um, citizen petitions gives us that evaluation of how transparent we are. Um, it allows us to give community feedback. Uh, I know there was initiative to allow people to talk on each agenda item at one time. Um, if we gotta be here a couple of hours, again, like Mr. Boyd said, we signed up for this. Um, I have thick skin. I knew getting in this, just like being in, serving in the military, I'm, I'm sitting in the fishbowl, and darts, knives, whatever is gonna be tossed in my direction, I take it as it comes, and the spirit of God protects me. Nobody here in the city on this plane can disrespect me or anything like that, because I respect myself, and that's enough. My big head also says I have a big ego, so there's nothing that anybody can say or do that will take me down. And that protects, I like to hear what citizens have to say, whether I agree with it or disagree with it. If they disagree, that is a key component of our First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I just want to, um, piggyback on something you said. I'm not sure if you know, uh, Councilmember Solomon, as you, as you know, uh, this, I know Councilmember Alvarez, no. Uh, anytime that, uh, you want to meet with a resident, uh, you can always go to the third floor, there are some empty offices up there where, uh, you can meet with residents, uh, if you have any concerns that is one. And also, I want to say again, uh, community engagement is good. We should be out in the community. We should go out in the community, we should attend different events, uh, different places, that's community engagement. But I still don't believe that a council chamber should be a war ground. And it's easy to take constructive criticism if you never being the one at that. It's either Councilmember Segaro, me, Mr. Kago, or Councilmember Alvarez. So, easy said than done until you're under the fire. Councilmember Segaro.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, I just want to say, I don't think anybody up here is trying to take away the citizen's right to speak, and, and, uh, I think where this coming from, and everybody understands, is the things that happened lately, situations, the disrespect, and all that. I don't mind communicating with anybody, and I think, you know, I'm probably one of the open guys up here, anybody can talk to me. Uh, and for the most part, I think everybody's always respectful, but it, as somebody said, it's a two-way streak. I know a lot of times people, uh, disrespect you, and then they expect you to be there for them when they want to communicate, and that's not how it works. I mean, uh, so, so my thing is, I think that we should look at changing it a little bit, and, uh, because, you know, if we have this all the time, and today we had three petitions, and, uh, a lot of times, those are things that this council is not even discussing. Uh, we discussed, that was a good example today, firearms, and now we're all being recalled for something that we are not even discussing, because it was brought up by a citizen's petition. And so same thing like last week, last week that was put on there, and several people spoke behind that, which we weren't even discussing, got into arguments, and then the person that brought that, had put that in the petition, left. And so, they talked, spoke, left.
Sir, uh, officer, take a five-minute break, he's interrupting. Please take him and move him outside. Thank you.
As I say.
It's a five-minute break, five-minute breaks, please. Uh, Chief Lopez, y'all, please take him outside. Segaro, Councilmember Segaro, we on the break, please don't engage. Please take him outside.
You guys can say facts, nobody else can say a fact. It's amazing how you can say fact, and nobody else can say a fact.
We're back in session.
I'm just pointing out a fact, that's all.
We're back, Mr. Kago. Officers, I'm gonna ax three times.
Can you leave? Anyway, as I was saying before I got interrupted. No, we're back in session.
Councilmember Segaro, do not engage. Do not engage.
And so as I was saying, he left, and the discussion continued.
Councilmember Segaro, we need to take a five-minute Let's get back to the business of the city. Okay, we have four councilmen, meet. Please take your seat. If you want to have a conversation, take it out in the hallway. And this goes back to what Councilmember Boyd say, this is not a circus. It's here to take care of the business of the city. And it's unfortunately that we're the only city that's around this city that you see this type of behavior. It does not have to be this way. You don't have to agree or like the council, but we were voted in by the majority of the people, not just six or seven people. So please, if you're here for the good of the city, not because you like me, don't, that's okay, but for the good of the city, please conduct yourself in decent and order so we don't have to have the police getting involved, and we can just carry on the business of the city. Please. Please. And Councilmember Segarra, Madam Secretary, could you please start his time over?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I apologize for interrupting you, sir.
And thank you, Mayor. And by all means, I wasn't trying to personalize or pick on anybody individually. I was just pointing out the fact as an example that, you know, we have a citizen's petition, and then other people get to speak on that. And like last week, we had three or four people spoke on that citizen's petition when the council wasn't even considering or discussing anything like that. Same thing like today, you know, it allows people to speak on it. So I think that, I don't want to take away the citizen's right from citizen's petition, but I think that there should be some kind of limitations. And a limitation can be one where if you do a citizen's petition and you want to speak on it, that doesn't give everybody else the right to come up here and speak on that item, because we're not listening to that item. We're not voting on that item. But yet, everybody else, I think that is the impression. And I think we almost, we had two speakers that were going to speak. One of them did spoke with a thread of recall, thinking that we were, as a council, discussing an item that was nowhere near a discussion, but it was a citizen's petition. And so I think that there should be limits where if you do a citizen's petition, you're the only one that can speak on that item. Nobody else can come up there and use that and take advantage of it and say, okay, now I'm going to speak on that item and, and do something like what happened last week and criticize the council because it's on the agenda. And so, so like the mayor said, you know, I'm in favor of doing something like what the mayor is, said is just changing it and amending it. And so, you know, that, that's my recommendation, but I will.
To change it? Is that a motion?
Hear what the rest of the council says.
Is that a motion?
No, I'll hear what the rest of the council says, and then you come back to me.
Okay, I'll come back to you for that motion. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the many citizens that called and/or emailed and/or just simply inquired about our position or my position on this particular item. Civil discourse, to me, is extremely important for us to be able to have clear and concise communication, to be able to say what you feel and for me to hear you, and then vice versa. So I think that that's extremely important. One of the things that does sadden me when I look at the way in which our meetings are structured and meetings run as compared to our neighboring cities, based on my recent travels with the National League of Cities and through TML and speaking to other cities that are of our size, this is not the norm as to how things go. We are here to legislate, we should be working on ordinances, we should be working on things that are truly going to be moving our city forward and producing good benefits and good outcomes for our citizens. With that said, I do think that the citizen's petition, when used appropriately, is efficient. So I do believe that putting some parameters on that petition is extremely important. I do understand, Madam, what was mentioned about the referendum. That is, to me, the more formal and extreme, where we have to go out and get the votes that are required for a formal petition. The citizen's petition, to me, based on my understanding, is extremely important, because we had a situation that was happening in a particular pocket in our city. I'm not in that particular neighborhood, it's not on my side necessarily, but we represent the city as a whole as well. That citizen was able to come up, and they brought that concern to the council. We were not necessarily aware of the gravity of the concern of that particular community, within our community. But we were also able to identify that that was not our issue, that it was a larger problem that needed to be addressed. And we were able to point that community within our city into the right direction. And it's important that we have that. But it's also appropriate, it's important that it's utilized appropriately so that we can do our business here and run our city, have meetings that are efficient, hear our citizens, and then act. If you want reasonable outcomes, if you have, there is a process for filing grievances, we need to follow that process. There's a process, if you want to be heard, you want a petition, you want something to be known about the city, you have best practices you want to share. It's not always about praise. If there's a problem, you bring it. Let's figure out how we can handle that as well. That citizen's petition, that was the purpose of that, if it's used appropriately. So I do believe that we need to keep it here, but I do believe that it should have some parameters as to not be able to continue to hijack our meetings and prevent us from actually doing what we were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. I just wanted to clarify some, something. There was two citizen petitions, and I'll just explain in the difference. The one is in the charter, which we can't change. Only the people can change that. And that is to add or remove legislative proposals. That's in the charter. That's where you get your signatures and everything. But then the one we put in place that's currently on the agenda was put on the agenda by the council in 1985 and has already had eight amendments. And it's not about, I keep on hearing this, and I'm glad you keep saying it. It's amending it. Not taking away anyone's freedom of speech, but we need to amend it. And I thank you for constantly saying that. And last but least, it's Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's been, it seems there's been a lot of assumptions made with this item, and I was hoping it'd get clarified before it was my turn to speak, but it has not. I agree with what this gentleman, Mr. Price, mentioned earlier is, as a citizen myself, if I was not on this dais, I would just want time where I can come say what I want to say and not need to fill out a form and send it for approval. I think the city of Harker Heights, Temple, Copper's Cove, they all do it the same way, whether you call it citizen's comments, whatever you want to call it, I think it's semantics. I would suggest eliminating the term citizen's petitions. Leave it at citizen comments, or whatever you want to call it. Give them their time to say what they want to say, whether it's on the agenda or it's not on the agenda. Let them say what they want to say, give them their time, and move forward. I do agree that citizen petition, I don't think that is the appropriate term. If you look up the definition of a petition, it says it's a formal written request, typically one signed by many people appealing to the authority with respect to a particular case. So it is one that is gone out for signatures, kind of like Prop A or recall petition or any kind of petition that they want to bring forward. I think that is the appropriate term for it. But I do agree that we should give them their time, say what you want to say, agenda or not agenda, and move on. That would be my suggestion, to kind of keep it simple.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I just want to reiterate that same thing with Mr. Alvarez. It's not that we want to take it, it's just that we want to eliminate all this further discussion of people that, you know, we want to, you know, eliminate the havoc sometimes that's created. And we don't, we want to give that person the right to speak, obviously. But then, we don't want everybody else coming in and taking advantage of that and speaking on things that are not, and again, I reemphasize that are not, on council agenda items. And so with that said, Mayor, I just, I make a motion that we change the citizen petition, keep it on there, but make it that only the person bringing the citizen's petition is the only person that can speak on it.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. The state law, the Open Meetings Act, that requires citizen comments and why citizen comments is on there, allows, a citizen requires that we allow citizens to comment, or any member of the public to comment on anything that's on the council agenda. So if the citizen petition is on the council agenda, then citizens can comment on it, under citizen comments, per state law.
So, so there goes that suggestion.
All right. Councilmember Solomon, I mean, I'm sorry, wait, I gotta go to Solomon. He hadn't spoken. Councilmember Solomon, and then I'll come back to you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I concur with Councilman Alvarez, because this is what I brought up earlier when I first came on, allowing the citizens to be able to speak what they want. And I, and I have seen other cities surrounding cities where they just have one section, they don't have, there's not two. You have citizen comments, then you have citizen's petition. I can see us having citizens comment and allowing them to speak on what they want to speak on, and then that's it, and we can move on with our business. And I think it would be a smooth transition. But at the same time, the citizens, as we respect you, you should respect us, because we're not, we're trying to get the business of the city done. We're trying to complete that. And I think that if you can say what you want to say, but we ask that you would say it respectfully. And that's all we're saying. We don't want to take your right of way of not saying anything or speaking on what you want to speak on. But we ask that you would respect us as well. And that's not hard to ask. You know, you can disagree, we know, that's democracy, we disagree. Hey, we disagree, we don't disagree. But we can, we can be respectful in that, in that tone. So I concur with, Madam Mayor, I concur with.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, please make it.
How did you make that? In terms of, we would have that, instead of citizen's petition, have citizen comments and allowing the comments to, to, allowing the citizens to speak on what they wanted to say.
So am I understanding you, and, and, City Attorney, am I understanding you that there are four minutes, that can, any citizen can talk about anything they want?
Well, we can, we can, we can, yes, we can, or we can go for three minutes. Most, most citizens, three minutes.
Then, the only change that has made is that you are getting away from the citizen petition. And now you're saying that you don't have to put anything in writing. It can be 10 people come up here and talk about any subject, anything they choose to.
Good point, we can, well, we can limit it. I mean, how we can, can we limit that?
What are you trying to say, limit it, Mr. Kegel?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I might make a suggestion. What, we've been looking at a lot of cities. And what the city of Waco does is at the beginning of the meeting, they have citizen comments on anything that's on the agenda. And then you go about the city, the business of the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, they have citizen comments on anything they want to comment on and have that at the end of the meeting.
So you're saying that the citizen comments can be on things first that's on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And then citizen comments at the end on any topic you want to talk about?
Yes, ma'am.
And since Councilmember Boyd and everybody agree that we get paid to stay here, I like that. Let's go for it. Let's do it. Somebody make that motion. Council, Mayor Proton.
If I can, was that already a motion on the floor, though? From Councilmember Solomon? There was not? Okay.
Council, Mayor Proton.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we do not remove the citizen's petitions, but we do have the comments before and the end.
That's not the motion.
That's not the motion?
That's what, that's not what he said.
What did you, Mr. Kegel, can you make your? We're gonna do, I make a motion to have the citizen petitions taken out. But we have comments in the beginning and end of meetings by any citizen.
Okay.
And if I could clarify, is that motion, we're saying, just like the city manager said, so the citizen comments at the beginning for on-agenda topics, citizen comments at the end for anything off of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that?
Yes, ma'am. Is that, would you speak up so she can say yes or no? Is that what you're saying, what Mr. Kegel stated?
We're gonna do exactly, we're not gonna. Not allow citizens to speak.
Okay.
But they'll have the comments in the beginning and on the end of the meeting. On the end of the meeting, they can speak on any subject.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay, what's the time? Two minutes? Okay, they said two minutes.
So I remake this motion.
You ain't even, you don't have to remake, you can just say it, because you haven't gotten a second.
Oh, that's right.
So you can still, you can, you can say it as many times till you get it right.
Okay.
So they were saying two minutes?
You want a time limitation of two minutes? Anything down this way?
Okay.
You okay with that?
Can I get a sec?
Madam Mayor, can the motion be restated?
We still, we still working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we working on it. Okay.
They said.
All right, we waiting on you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we, we have comments in the beginning of our meetings and three-minute comments on the end of our meeting.
The comments, the citizen comments, the first one is for agenda items only. And then the citizen comments on any topic at the end of the meeting is three minutes only.
It's three minutes only.
Can I get a second to that? Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no. All vote, we got the screen up there. I just think y'all are working with, all right, good, yay. It passed, six to one, with Councilmember Adams being against. So we did make the amendment, and that will be the ninth amendment made to the citizen petition. Oh, I'm glad that's over. Thank you, thank you, Council, for all your excellent recommendations and working together as a team.
Madam Mayor, point of inquiry, does this amend the governance standards now?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. So at public hearing, Council, you have three times to speak each for three minutes. Madam Secretary.
PH-23-057, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Republic Engineering and Development Services, LLC, on behalf of BFF Construction, LLC, case number Z-2323, to rezon approximately 6.18 acres being part of Track C out of the Clean Air Investment Corporation Industrial Tract from R3, multi-family residential district, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, with RT1, residential townhouse, single-family district. The property is located west of Dogwood Boulevard at approximately 950 feet south of East Veterans Memorial Boulevard, Clean, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Clean zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 6.18 acres being part of Track C out of the Clean Air Investment Corporation Industrial Tract from R3, multi-family residential district, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, with RT1, residential townhouse, single-family district uses, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Messer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Revel presented this item the week before last. I'm happy to go through it again if you'd like.
Counsel, no one? Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the, is the applicant here? Sir, would you like to speak? Please come on. Would you please state your name for the record?
Howdy, Tyler Freeze, Republic Engineering, civil engineer for the project. Like you said, presented last week. If you have any questions, any refreshers, we're here for questions. Developers here as well, so we're here for anything y'all need.
Yes, we have one, we don't. Thank you, sir.
Got me excited.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Sean Price. I didn't mean to hit it twice. The public hearing is open. Yes, sir. Sir, you have four minutes.
Which one is this one?
You signed up for.
059, right?
No, sir. You signed up for PH-23-057. You signed up for all of them, but this just the one.
Yeah, I was just, I think I'm a little lost. I think I got the, no, I got the right, I don't understand where that one's here. I meant the 23-059 and the 23-060. Those are the ones that I signed up for.
Oh, well, you have 23. Oh, yeah, you got all of them on here. So, okay, I'll call you back up when we get to 23-059 and 23-60.
Yeah, I was back over here. Just, no need to call me back, I'm just opposed to them. Just stop rezoning.
Oh, oh, okay. Don't call you back.
Yeah, no, so not necessarily, I'm just in opposition to all that rezoning right there. You know, the growth, it's overgrowing the city too fast, you know? No drainage, no water pressure, so, and my taxes keep going up for it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Public hearing. That's okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Public hearing is closed. All right. Can I get a motion? Oh, Councilmember Bo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Make a motion to approve PH 23-057.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams.
A second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23-058, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Republic Engineering and Development Services on behalf of Michael and Rhonda Young and Clean Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated, case number Z 2324, to rezone approximately 19.53 acres being part of lots three, four, and seven, Block 1, Casper Creek Edition from A Agricultural to B3 Local Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for boat recreational vehicle, RV, and semi-truck storage, and R2 two-family residential to B3 Local Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for boat, RV, and semi-truck storage, and R2 two-family residential. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Clean by changing the zoning of approximately 19.53 acres being part of lots three, four, and seven, Block 1, Casper Creek Edition from A Agricultural to B3 Local Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for boat, RV, and 18-wheeler storage, and R2 two-family residential to B3 Local Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for boat recreational vehicle and 18-wheeler storage, and R2 two-family residential, providing for the conditions of the CUP, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, this was presented last week. Would you like for Mrs. Messer to go through it again?
All right, no, thank you.
Is the applicant here?
I do too.
I'm still Tyler. If y'all got any questions, we're still here.
No, sir. Oh, yes, we do, we do, we do. I'll take that back.
I guess it's.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To you and Ms. Messer. The, just so I can get clarity, so where the entry where it was before, this is off of Tremere, correct?
Yes.
The traffic, will the traffic now go through the neighborhood? And is that a, that isn't, will that be too much traffic? Or what type of? Can you clarify?
Yeah, so the previous spot was adjacent to the proposed subdivision between us and Tremere. So their houses would back up or sidelot to us either way. The new proposal slides it further south. That was mainly done for drainage reasons. And it does now go through that subdivision. We've worked with that. It's a different property owner, different project. That subdivision's not my client's project. But he's worked really well with his neighbor. They've come to a mutual agreement on how that neighborhood lays out. So no houses, no driveways will front where that access comes through. It'll only be side yards. We've also made that right of way a little wider. I don't want to talk too much on their project. They're a different case. I think they're coming through in the next agenda or so. But that's the idea, to limit the neighborhood traffic on that road, so there won't be a lot of conflicting there. We've discussed a lot of things from an engineering standpoint about restricting parking, maybe, if that needs to happen because there's travel trailers moving through, you know, larger vehicles, basically. So that is, that is the idea, you're right. It is moved down and it now goes through the subdivision. But we've tried to make as many modifications to that, so it's not an issue.
Okay. And that, we have no, there's, these guys are still good with that? Ms. Wester?
Yes, sir. If we can bring the presentation back up, I can show you an exhibit if that's helpful. So here you can see, this is the layout of the proposed reconfiguration, if you will. So whereas previously, the access was through here, the access to the RV, boat and RV storage has been moved down to this location here. So it will be accessed, Tremere's over here, and this is Platinum Storage Drive here. So it will be accessed through the residential subdivision, but along the side lot lines.
Got it.
So there will be no driveways or homes fronting on where those, where those travel trailers will be.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Bo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where it states begin private driveway, is that the actual gate to enter the property?
So the private, there will be a private driveway. The gate will actually be to the rear of the lots. So it won't be up at the front of the lots. It'll be placed to the west of the rear property line.
Okay, so it won't be at the end of the lots, correct? It's going to go further, further, further in, excuse me?
That's right.
Okay. Because my only concern was if it was further up, the traffic would kind of get piled up, get those long trailers, et cetera.
You can actually see, there's, it's marked on the site plan here. The gate is right about here.
Okay. All right. That's all I got, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor Proton.
My question is, that's not a James Way. That's coming to the back from Stagecoach? Basically, am I, am I all?
Stagecoach is to your north.
It's to the north. So it's coming up back to a chaparral?
It's very close to chaparral.
That's, I wanted to make sure.
So this is, this is chaparral down here.
So it comes up through the back of the chaparral. Is there a housing area right there? Am I missing a whole housing area right there on the corner?
There are several. I don't know how to get rid of, how do I get rid of all those marks?
Let's see.
The left. Thank you. So there are some duplexes down at the hard corner of Chaparral and Tremere. And then it's mostly undeveloped along Tremere.
I thought it was more undeveloped.
So the west is Swan Ranch, and then I can't remember, it's Casper Estates behind it.
Okay, that's. I know where we are. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Bo. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
I move to approve. Thank you.
No problem. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor, I believe it's 058.
058? Am I on 059? Oh, I'm sorry, I moved on.
058.
Yes, yes, ma'am. You're 100% correct. Let me go back to it. Yes, ma'am, you're correct. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counselwoman Gonzalez.
All right, give me a second.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23-059, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by JNW Architects LLC on behalf of SCI Texas Funeral Services LLC doing business as Crawford Bowers Funeral Home, case number Z 2325, to rezone approximately 1.47 acres out of, out of part of Lot 1, Block 1, Crawford Bowers subdivision number 2, from B3 Local Business District and B5 Business District to B3 Local Business District and B5 Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for a crematorium. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Clean zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 1.47 acres being part of Lot 1, Block 1, Crawford Bowers subdivision number 2, from B3 Local Business District and B5 Business District to B3 Local Business District and B5 Business District with a conditional use permit, CUP, for a crematorium, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, this was presented last week. Would you like for Mrs. Messer to redo the slide? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Applicant, is he here? Good evening, ma'am. Would you please state your name?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name's Jennifer Walker with JNW Architects. And I am here on behalf of Crawford Bowers. I was here last, well, I guess it's been two weeks at the workshop. There was some technical information that y'all had questions on, and I reached out to each of you when I went back to the client to get the specifics on the actual equipment. Absolutely. And if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to assist. Thank you.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Public hearing is open. Onka. Welcome back. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very, very briefly, I am in favor of approving this. I learned about this project at the P&amp;Z meeting a couple of months ago. And they addressed all environmental concerns. And of course, they're going to have to follow the architectural standards. So people won't even know what in that building will look as nice as any other building. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your expertise on that. With that being said, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Solomon. To approve PH-23-059.
Yes.
Councilmember Bo.
Second.
All in favor, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Bo. The motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23-060, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2024 annual budget of the city of Clean to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city council of the city of Clean, Texas, amending the FY 2024 annual budget of the city of Clean to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Straight.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
This was presented last week, Counsel. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? No, thank you. All right. Mr. Price, you say you did not want to speak. Are you sure? Before I move forward. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Public hearing open. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve. Yes.
Counsel? Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Bo.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bo. Counsel, all in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, discussion items. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
DS 23-109, discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for All SS 4A Grant.
Mr. Cagle? Oh, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everyone know, I've been participating in the task force for this. K-Tempo staff is supposed to come and speak to the council and give the public a presentation on the Safe Streets grant and where we are. I think we are in good place to get the grant. I'm not a soothsayer, so I can't say, yes, we will. But the next step is for us to fight to get monies to come into Clean to take care of some of the safe issues. So I will try to get it publicized when the next discussion by K-Tempo will be had regarding the matter. And so that is an open meeting and a public meeting that you all can attend as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams and all council members that sit on the sub-commission. We need to do better in bringing updates back as Councilmember Adams did tonight. So we need to find room on the agenda. You serve on the committee. And just give us some updates on what's going on. And I thank you for leading by example, Councilmember Adams. All right. Madam Secretary.
DS 23-110, municipal court briefing.
Good evening, Judge Christner. I know you'd be wondering, why do they put me last? I know.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, Mr. Cagle. I'm happy to be here again. It's been a while. And I'm ready to give you the briefing for the conditions of municipal court at this point. If I remember how to use this. Okay, so I'm going to cover the number of defendants who came to court in August and September. Also, I'll go over the National Center for State Courts Court Tool Metrics. We've done this before. It's the clearance rate, the time of disposition, age of pending caseload, and trial date certainty. I know it's very interesting stuff, but please bear with me. Okay, starting with the number of defendants who came to court in August and September. We'll start with August. So in the lobby, we have the clerks in the lobby. These are people who just come in, and this is with new cases. And the people that have come in in August were 1,652 people. Now, they were seen by the clerks that handle people in the lobby. And it's a large number. Now, beyond that, we have people who are set to come into court to see the judges. Now, we had 990 people set to come to see the court, to see the judges in the court. However, out of those 990, only 423 people actually showed up. That's kind of how it goes with the court. You know, a lot of people are set, but they don't actually show up. And that's the number in August. Then in September, we had 1,560 come to the lobby area. And 987 were set to, on the court dockets, but only 341 actually showed up. So this is kind of some of the issues we've been having really forever. People are set for court, they don't show up. And when they don't show up, you know, we send notices out to people, let them know, actually, we just started doing that, letting them know that you were set for court, you didn't show up. And now you have to, you will send them on a new docket called failure to appear. And it's the same thing, they start to be arraigned because of these new cases. And if they don't show up again, we'll actually issue arrest warrants. We weren't doing that for years. That's why we have a big backlog. But we're getting to that now. So hopefully, the backlog will be worked and we'll get to, we'll be able to get these people here on a more regular basis, as they should be. Next, we'll move on to the National Center for State Courts Court Tool Metrics for August and September. Now, the first thing we'll talk about is the clearance rate. The clearance rate is the number of outgoing cases as a percentage of the number of incoming cases. So this clearance rate measures whether the court is keeping up with its incoming caseload. So here we have the numbers here. Now, going back to July, which we already covered last time, the actual number was 62.82%. That was our clearance rate. But the national time standard, as you can see, is 100%. Now, in August, we increased it greatly. In August, the number was 129.57%. And in September, it increased even greater, it's 183.51%. Now, the reasons for the increase is in the comments there. The number of cases placed in active status, that those number of cases have significantly increased because we've been really cracking down on old cases. Cases that are over 10 years old. The prosecutor's been reviewing those cases and dismissing some of those cases because the likelihood of those cases being closed out the right way with people coming in and taking care of the cases is remote because the cases are so old. So by state law, as a judge, I'm allowed to waive the fines and court costs and have those cases just gone. And so that's what we've been doing. Because those cases, they've just been sitting out in space for such a long time. The chances of those cases being resolved are just not good at all. So that's why we've been doing that. Moving on to the time to disposition. Now, this is the percentage of cases disposed or otherwise resolved within established timeframes. Now, this measure, used along with the clearance rate and age of pending caseload, is an essential management tool that assesses the length of time it takes a court to process cases. Now, a lot of information here. But going back to July, which we covered last meeting, the numbers are within 60 days, 90 days, and 180 days. with, the numbers are within sixty days, ninety days, and a hundred and eighty days, now, in sixty days, it should be seventy-five percent, in July was twenty-nine point three-four percent, in August was forty-seven point eight-one percent, in September was thirty-seven point eight percent, and you can see in ninety days, a little better, but not, not where it should be, because in ninety days, it should be ninety percent, and in July, we had thirty-seven point seven-two percent, August fifty-nine point four-nine percent, and September forty-eight point eight percent. Now, move on to a hundred and eighty days, now, this should be ninety-eight percent, and in July was sixty-six point four-seven, August forty-seven percent, and September fifty-nine point seven-nine percent, now, the reason, the reason these numbers are so lower than they should be is because, as I said before, warrants were not issued between twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty-two, that's a very long time, the, the consequence of that is these cases just stood out in inactive status when they should have been inactive, and because they were active, they were just shown there as they were still there and not disposed of, so once the warrants were issued, and they're being issued now, they become inactive, which is where they should be, until the person has actually served with the warrant, and they can come and dispose of the case, so we're working on that now, but it's gonna take a long time, because there's thousands of cases out there in this situation, but we're working on them, so just bear with us, we'll get there eventually. Now, also, we have the age of pending caseload, now, this is the age of the active cases that are pending before the court, measured as the number of days from filing until the time of measurement, so these cases that are filed but are not yet disposed are what makes up the court's pending caseload. So more numbers here, so starting with July, which we covered last time, we have cases between one and sixty days old, then cases between sixty-one and ninety days old, and also cases between ninety-one and one-eighty, and finally, cases older than one-eighty. So as you can see here, in July, we had three point five-four percent with six, one to sixty, August three percent, September two point nine-six percent, so close to the same, sixty-one ninety, then we had July one point nine-three percent, August two point zero-six percent, September one point six-five percent, then ninety-one to eight, to a hundred and eighty days, July four point one-nine percent, August four point two-seven percent, and September four point five-five percent, then older than one-eighty, in July, we had ninety point three-four percent, August ninety point six-seven percent, September ninety point eight-four percent, as you can see, the national time standards show that seventy-five percent of cases disposed within sixty days is the standard, then ninety percent within ninety days, and ninety-eight percent within a hundred and eighty days, and as you can see, the reason why we have these older cases with the higher numbers, a higher percentages of being, taking care of, is because we're addressing that backlog of cases, so those are all old cases, they're all over a hundred and eighty days old, but now, we're taking care of those cases, so that's why the numbers are a lot higher for those older cases. And now, because the court is almost fully staffed, we've been issuing warrants at a greater pace all of this year, so we've been cracking out these warrants now, so that's why we're able to take care of these cases. Okay, finally, we have the time date certainty, now, this is the number of times cases are disposed by trial that are scheduled for trial, this metric provides a tool for management to evaluate the effectiveness of calendaring and continuance practices, cases that are set for trial, basically. Okay, so we don't have a lot of cases ever set for trial, as you can see, we had none in July, none in August, in September, we had two cases set, but they were disposed of before trial, so we have the, the number, percent of cases disposed were a hundred percent, so we don't really have an issue with continuances or trial delays, because the prosecutor's usually able to work out cases with the defendant before trial, so that, that makes the more effective course, court system, because trials are very laborious, so it just makes things a lot easier, but obviously, everyone has the right to go to trial if they want to, but if the prosecutor, you know, negotiates with the defendant, and they decide not to go to trial, that benefits everyone. Okay, so in summary, we talked about the number of defendants who come to court between August and September, we talked about the National Center for State Courts Court Tool Metrics, the clearance rates, times of disposition, age of pending caseload, and trial date certainty. Now, I understand that, you know, councilmembers, you're not nerds like me for court stuff, so maybe this stuff is not that interesting, but I really love this stuff, so just take it as it is, but if you have any questions, please let me know, and I'm more to provide, I'm more than happy to provide any information that you guys are interested in providing, just let me know what you'd like, so hopefully that, hopefully that really helps you.
Thank you, Judge, and all you do in your department, you're doing a great job, you hit the road running, and you have really turned the municipal, municipal court around, and I see you a lot in the community also, so I'm truly grateful for you and your staff and everything that you do.
I thank you, Mayor, for that deeply, so does my staff, and I'll just say, it's not me, it's my staff, my staff makes me look good.
That's good.
Definitely, thank you so much, and we're almost fully staffed, almost.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, before January, we'll be fully staffed.
That's awesome, that is so awesome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, councilmember Adams, and then councilmember Segarra.
Just a couple of questions, not a lot, first one is, what is, is there a general type of cases that'll be in this miss that you handle, or just it's, it covers the gamut?
Anything that's ten years old.
Okay.
Ten years old or older.
And I think, was it a year ago that you, you, you tried warranty, you did warranty amnesty as a way?
Warrant forgiveness is what we call it, and it starts actually next month, January first to January, I'm sorry, December first to December thirty-first.
Okay.
So warrant forgiveness starts again, we were successful with it last year, but it was the first, you know, it was the first time we did it, so a lot of people were skeptical, so I wanted to do it again, so people could see it was successful last year, so they can come in and take care of their cases with having their warrant fees lifted, as long as they make a good faith effort to come and take care of their cases.
And did you use our communications department to?
I sure did, we just put out a video.
Thank you.
And I got compliments from the video, so I'm just saying, I, like I said, they did, they made me look good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They did a great job, and they have like little promotions and things like that, so our communication department is amazing.
Yes, they are, they're amazing.
Yeah, they are. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Judge, always good to see your excitement, as you say, your passion is there, and you can tell, and most of that stuff, I think I, I get about one quarter of what you say, so, but in time, I'm learning a little bit and more, so by the time you're done, maybe I'll go study law or something.
I understand, councilmember Segarra, to me, it's like either algebraic calculus, it's like, if you get it, you get it, if you don't, it's, it is what it is.
But my, my question is, and it seems like from my perspective, you've been coming up here quite a bit, and I think that, you know, not that, you know, we, we don't want that, but I think you're coming up here, what, once a quarter?
Now, it's once a quarter, it used to be once a month, and now, it's once a quarter.
Got it, got it, and I just want to clarify, because I just want to make sure that, you know, we've kind of spaced it enough, because I know that you got a busy docket and stuff, and I don't want you coming up here all the time, you know, when you have to do it, so you think that once a quarter is still, is about right, or should we extend that, or?
Well, I leave it to the council, it's at your discretion, I'd prefer to come here less frequently, you know, I would.
Well, we have to see you.
But I like it too, but I get up early in the morning, you know, so it's like a long day for me, but I'm just saying, I bet your disposal, because, you know, obviously, this information, if this is what you're interested in, I'm more than happy to give it, because transparency is important.
This is information that, I mean, if there's something of a need, but I mean, if we do it like, you know, semi-annually or something like that, you'll just have more numbers, but it's the same information, and I, I just don't, you know, from my perspective, you only meet twice a month, but it seems like, yeah, you're still coming up here quite a bit.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there a motion of direction?
Yeah, I, I would if the council is, you know, semi-annually, instead of once a quarter, that, you know, that way, you don't have to worry so much about these numbers, and I know you, you enjoy giving those numbers to us.
I really do, but it is a burden on my staff to give these numbers, it really is, it really is.
So, yeah, I would like to do it just once, semi-quarter, semi-annually.
Okay, councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, the motion of direction to have Judge Christner to come before this wonderful council and the public twice a year? Motion of direction passes seven to zero, once again, Judge, thank you, and we will see you, what, six months from today?
Sounds good, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you and all, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, council, I have an item on here, DS dash twenty-three dash one-thirteen, that I would like to move up, because DS dash twenty-three one-one-one and DS dash twenty-three dash one-one-two is behind closed doors, is that okay? Yes, and, I see you.
Did you say one-eleven, too?
No, sir, well, yes, seventeen and eighteen is behind closed doors, Mr. Kegel just brought me that to my attention, and my item is the last one. Alright, thank you, alright, council, discuss the Warment Center location. Wow, I am so excited to announce this. We have been meeting with churches throughout the community, myself and Communication Director, we do everything together, mostly, General Ford, and so after our meeting, I had talked to pastors and churches about if they were willing to run our Warment Shelter, so I have some excellent, excellent news, we do have a church, and it is Liberty Christian Center, Pastor Gilchrist, and we also have Charis Church, Pastor Patrick, they will be providing the transportation from the chamber or here at the City Hall, behind the chamber, for any unsheltered person that needs transportation over to Grace, to Liberty Christian Center, and for the days that they may be having church, or on Wednesday, a special occasion, we will still do it at the Colleen Activity Center, so we have partnered with a church, two churches, that will be taking on, moving forward, our Warment Center, and so if you see the pastors out in the community or anything, please, please say thank you, this is something that I've heard councilwoman Gonzalez, county mayor Proton, and even councilmember Alvarez stated, we have to get the community more involved, especially the churches and nonprofits, so our prayers were answered. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So thank you for, for that, that's, that's wonderful news, that means the citizens, the community heard, the community heard us, they heard the call to action, and they heeded the call, and so I did call a couple of the pastors, say thank you, I also want to keep you encouraged to please continue to keep reaching out, because there are some others that are now interested in partnering with the folks that have been diligently and faithfully working when you didn't have the support, so thank you to you all for out there for your volunteering, your time and your hours, and we are going to continue that call for action for help for you, for our citizens, thank you.
Thank you, and I meet with them quite often, different pastors, to discuss that, and Mr. Kegel, I want to thank you and Chief Kabinsky, and also our Emergency Management Director, Peter, Peter Perez, for meeting with Pastor Gilchrist and laying down the foundation, how we can move forward and stay within the parameters of the law, and ensuring that we don't, we do everything correctly and everything is in place, so for both of you, I'd like to thank you for taking your time to meet with him and Mr. Kegel, so we can make sure legally, everything is in order, so thank you. With that being said, pursuant to, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, Government Code five-five-one dash zero-zero-one, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the twenty-eighth day of November at seven twenty-five PM, under the following authority, section five-five-one dash, I mean, point zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, the city council will discuss the purchase exchange lease of value of the possible sale and value of city-owned property in downtown Colleen, deliberation is in an open, deliberation in an open meeting of this matter would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiation, negotiation with third person, section five-five point zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development, the city council negotiations, the city council will discuss commercial or financial information and possible economic development incentive related to a business prospect for the property in downtown Colleen. Section five-five-one dash point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, the city of Colleen will consult with the legal counsel regarding pending and contemplated litigations related to condemnation of street light system. The mayor now call the meeting, go into closed session. Calling the meeting back to order at eight o'clock, motion, councilmember Adams, to adjourn, okay, councilmembers, okay, all in favor? Our meeting adjourned.